Okay, we're recording.
All right, thank you. All right, it is four o'clock on September 2nd, and so I am going to open this city council study session. I am going to begin with roll call. I see some people who are here, but just in case I don't see you on the screen here. So Chuck, Owen?
I'm here.
Brenda Kinzer?
Present.
Glenn Allen? I see, I thought I saw him on here. So Glenn Allen?
He was in, Mayor. He's trying to reconnect, I believe.
Okay, and Joel and Kestee, our new member?
Present.
Carl DeYoung?
Old member present.
Okay, and Brendan McGoughan?
Present.
Jared Couch?
Here.
Okay, all right. So we're going to begin the council meeting with a review of our goals and objectives, and particularly for the coming year, 2021. I don't know if you've had a chance to, we did attach the 2019 goals and objectives and the work plan. I don't know if you've had a chance to review that, but what would council like to do here? Would you like to go through and update these? What are your thoughts? We can go through them one by one if you like.
I think it would be helpful to go through them one by one.
So well then, let's start with goal one, and that is expanding public safety service in and around Seagull Woolley.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest that we share the screen? That'd be great.
Are you able to do that? Bill, share the screen.
Great, thank you.
So the first one talks about, it was in 2012, we wanted to increase the sales tax in order to build up our law and fire equipment and needed personnel. We had some action steps. I actually went through them. I don't know if anybody has had a chance to do that, but some of what we were looking to do has been complicated simply because we were busy with Prop 1. Also, the police department has been actively recruiting, and they have now, I think, acquired everyone that they need. And COVID has made it challenging. Also, on number four, we were talking about partnering with the school for the SRO. We have been in communication with the school district, in particular with Superintendent Phil Brockman, and that unfortunately, the SRO is going to be, have to be, it's going to, we're going to have to put it on hold for 2021 due to budget reductions and again, complications developed through COVID. So any thoughts, ideas for the first goal with action steps? Do you want to leave it as is for now?
Madam Mayor, this is Chief Tucker. Can I chime in just for one moment?
That would be great. Go ahead.
Whenever I get ready to do my presentation, I hit some bullet points on that one, just kind of reiterating some of what you said and explaining a little bit, if that would help whenever it's, whatever you want me to do a presentation on it.
That would be great. Thank you, Lynn. Okay. Council, I'm going to give you one month's opportunity to chime in. Otherwise, we're going to move on to goal two. Any comments? All right, hearing none. The second goal was to promote economic development. And if you have read through that, you know that some of this has already happened, and some of this has really changed up. So for example, helping the Downtown Association obtain state accreditation, we did work with them on that. They were not fortunate enough to have gained that last year, like they had hoped back in 2019. And also, we, I have not been able to reach Ian. I'm making the assumption that the Downtown Association has disbanded, although I cannot get ahold of him to find out, confirm, or deny that. As far as the conduct of community meetings with residents, businesses about growth and shared vision, we had been working with the Downtown Association to do that, and they were doing a great job. But... So that is where we are at with that. I also want to make you aware of number four, talking about the continuing publishing of City Scene Magazine. We received news back in May that the Peter Phillips Publishing business was actually going out of business, and they are in fact out of business. They have helped us put together our summer issue, and they will help us with our fall issue. But as far as what we're going to do, as far as publishing, we have to look at costs, we have to look at options, and of course, the big thing will be is if we have the funding for it. So that one is, you know, kind of on hold for now. But are there any thoughts or comments? Anything you'd like to delete or add for goal two?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Kinzer?
I would like to see if we can confirm the status of the Downtown Association, and then maybe action step number one would be one that we should focus on when we're able to have meetings again without the assistance of the Downtown Association. That's something I feel like we need to focus more on.
Agreed. Okay, very good. Thank you. Yeah, I am working on that. I have sent out letter, email, made calls, texts, and I haven't had any results. So I have made the assumption, they ran out of money early last year, and they have not had any fundraisers prior to 2020 or even COVID. So yeah, so we are working on that. But I will, I'll try to confirm the status of the Seagull Woolley Downtown Association. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman McGoughan. Would it be possible to add an action step for helping local, our businesses with COVID restrictions? I know we did some help with the CARES Act recently. Maybe having an action item for any other support that we can do or listening to them on what the city can do to help them.
Okay, so assisting them with COVID restrictions, are you speaking specifically financial, Councilman McGoughan?
Yeah, I would say specifically financial, but I would say talking to them would be part of it as well. If there's something that we can do, for example, the downtown, you know, we opened up so that they could do outdoor seating.
Yes, yes.
Do that partnership with them where it's a feedback, where they give us feedback on things that they're struggling with and things the city can do to help them throughout this period.
Okay, all right. And you know, I have been doing some of that, and I know, I believe Councilwoman Kestee has also had conversation with a couple people downtown. But I would encourage all of you too, you know, certainly, you know, you are well within your rights and concerns if you would like to also have those conversations. I think that's really great, but you're right, we are. We've been trying through the grants, the grant that we put out, the parklets that we have done. Every now and then, I make a trip down there just to check in with them. So please feel free to do that as well. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to goal three then, to improve city infrastructure. Any thoughts or comments on this? We're continuing to do all of this.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kinzer, yes?
Do we have any further information on action step number four regarding the old library building? And then we talked about youth center, rec center. Do we have any more thoughts in mind about where the path really will go with that one?
So we do not. We did do a survey. It was online, and we have received the results of that, which basically, people do want to see parks and rec in there. I have still had those conversations with the why. They too are trying to figure out what they're going to do as far as events, but they're still interested in partnering with us to work with that. But do you have thoughts regarding that, Councilwoman Kinzer?
No, I just, I still agree along those lines that a rec center would be ideal and really could be useful here in Seagull Woolley. We could use a center like that for more activities for kids, seniors, whatever.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman DeYoung?
Yeah, so you said the survey was complete. Is that on our website? Where can we take a look at that data and cross tabs and see what the input was, please?
Bill Chambers, can you answer that for Councilman DeYoung?
I can't recall if we actually posted the results on the website. I know that I did provide them to you, Julia, but I don't recall offhand. I can go back and check. That's been a few months ago.
Okay, all right. So what I will do then is I will have Bill resend those to me, and we can get them out to you so that you can see those. I thought I had made mention of it in one of my letters to you, but updates, but I will double check. I will make sure that those get sent out to you.
Madam Mayor? This is Mark Freiberger.
Yes?
I would suggest for council's consideration, as I've been discussing at various meetings over the last year, it may be useful to add an action step or a goal to replace the funding that was lost from the Transportation Benefit District due to I-976. Might be something to memorialize in this document.
Okay, so a goal to replace the transportation, I'm writing this down as I'm saying this, the transportation?
Transportation Benefit District funding, previously from the vehicle tabs, which have been eliminated or will be once the court acts on I-976. I haven't heard in the last couple weeks if they have done that yet.
Okay. And just so the council is aware, probably one of the most primary ways to do that would be to implement a tax. So we would have to take that before the, before the public and ask that of them. Mr. Freiberger, do you know of any other way that we could possibly, because that was a lot of money that was lost. And of course, the advantage of the tax is that it's consistent and it's regular, and it's not, we're not at the whim of the legislature changing the tabs, vehicle tabs.
Yeah, under the TBD legislation, I think the 0.02 sales tax is about the only option left to us at this point.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, okay, thank you. If nobody is going to add anything, I think that I would like to add something that the Public Works Department is currently working on, and that is the ADA Transition Plan. And Mark can probably speak to that. Maybe he's going to when he does his presentation. But he is currently putting together an ADA Advisory Board, and I think that that would be something that we might want to add, since it is something that we are required by law to complete. So I would like to add that to the improvement of city infrastructure.
And I concur with that, Mayor. I think that's a good idea to memorialize that. We should have the plan finished by the end of March of 2021, and then we'll have an implementation element to think about how we're going to do that.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. Any other thoughts? Councilman McGoughan, yeah?
I had a question for goal three. It could probably be part of goal two. Do we know what the Urban Village Mixed Use Plan is? And how will support the infrastructure around that?
So speaking to the Urban Village that's going to go out by McDonald's, out there by Highway 20 and Hodgins Road, is that what you're talking, yeah?
Yes.
So I'm going to turn that over to Director John Coleman. I think you could answer that.
Yeah, so infrastructure development would be coordinated by and paid for by the developer. So as they propose improvements, they'd be responsible for bringing in whatever utilities or road improvements that are necessary. The roads already been developed, the Hodgins and Stendal have already been built, primarily mostly to city standards. There's some little finishing up pieces that needs to be done. So most of, most of the infrastructures in place, when we designated the Urban Village Mixed Use as a potential development area, the higher levels of residential and commercial, we did look at the ability of the area to serve transportation needs, water and sewer, and all of the, all of the necessary stubs at least are in place. So it's really just up to the developer to then build their facilities.
Okay, so there's nothing that is left on our side. We're pretty much all staged, just waiting for the developer at this point.
As far as I know, and I don't know if Mark's aware of any deficiencies that the city would be responsible for helping with, but I think, I think the city's got all the pieces in place. And it was largely the developer did that back when the Safeway was planned. So the Janicki family did the improvements back in the early 2000s, roughly.
Yeah, this is Mark. I'm not aware of any things that we're on the hook to develop out there at this point. It will mostly take place organically as the developer improves the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Any other thoughts or questions before we move on to goal four? All right, hearing none. So goal four is to enhance the city's parks and provide recreational opportunities. This is something that we are still continuing to work on. We've been working on it. The improvements to Howser Field are nearly complete. In fact, it looks fantastic. If you haven't been out there to check it out, please do. And we're working on RCO grants to help complete the Phase One project for Almstead Park. Any questions, input, thoughts?
Madam Mayor?
Okay, Councilman Couch?
I had one, and correct me if I misspeak, but I think recently we heard, so we've talked for a long time about the need for a park in Ward Two.
Yes.
There was, there's property off of North Township that the city might potentially end up with down the road, but we heard that there might be a change with the estate. And I just wondered if we could possibly, you know, make it a goal to maybe look at other potential sites and, you know, maybe get a plan in place for trying to get a park in Ward Two.
Okay. So yes, so we've, you're right, we've had that conversation on Reed Street, that we have that property there. And at one point, we were, we had Habitat for Humanity come before us and ask if they could purchase it. And at that point, the council did indicate that they wanted that property to become a park. Our problem there was that funding, and it's still, still our situation. But so, but if I hear you correctly, Councilman Couch, you're talking about not, because that is in Ward Two, the Reed Street is. But you're talking about the possibility of, if possible, acquiring other properties for future parks? Is that correct?
Well, correct. Either that or, you know, putting, you know, trying to create a plan to, that we can, you know, obviously, figure out a funding plan if, you know, if the council continues with the thought of the Reed Street Park, you know, obviously, it would be a great spot for it. You know, but if, depending on what we decide to do with that property, just basically, you know, my hope would be that we find a way to put a park in the ward, you know, because we've talked about it, you know, quite frequently, getting somewhere on the kind of the north side of town for the communities on this side of 20.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's good. I like the idea too of possible funding for parks, simply because we have Memorial Park, which is a park, but it's in desperate need, dire need of being basically rebuilt. We don't have much there for the children who live in that area. I would say the only two good parks we have right now is Bingham and Riverfront Park. Almstead's still in the development. You might say even Memorial Park is still in the development stage. And Reed Street, of course, is still a big unknown, what, where we're going to come up with the money and how we're going to make that happen. Although I will say, I'll put that out now. I have been talking with Jerry Grissom from the school. He's involved with the STEM program, and he has a class that he teaches where they work with, it's kind of a landscape engineering class. And he and I have been talking. He made the suggestion that we possibly approach WSU students who are doing landscape design, see if we can't get one of them to take that on and design it for us, basically for free. And then he said the high school could help with the possibility of building. We still need the money. We would still have to buy the trees. We would still have to buy the equipment. We would still have to put the infrastructure in. But I have been trying to work with those entities that may be able to help us get it there a little sooner than later, so.
Yeah, I like the creative approach, and I'm pretty confident that Mark and Nathan could find a grant for us to get that done.
Yeah. Yeah, the grants that were, that are out right now are the RCO grants, and we are applying for those. We will be doing our interview for those at the end of this month, and that money that we're looking for will actually go to Almstead Park. So because we actually have funding there, other funding support and in-kind projects.
No, I guess my point is for, if, you know, we're goal planning just going forward, that, you know, we obviously have projects in the works to, you know, for future planning to try to make that a priority, you know, since we do have property, or, you know, what makes the most sense for a location.
All right.
I'd like to, very good, very, yes. Councilwoman Kestee? Yeah, I too would like to see something in the works if it, if it is zoned out for a park or not, then we make, we make steps to make those things happen so that if we do decide to make it a park, it gets zoned for a park, then we're that much closer to turning it into a park when we have the funds available.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All good, all good input. Anyone else?
Mayor Johnson, this is John, Planning Director.
Yes.
So we collect impact fees for parks to help develop new parks. We've kept that number artificially low at $1,500 per unit. And that's been a council decision. But if the council's interested in increasing that, that's something that there is a potential to do. I'm not advocating one way or another. Just want to let you know that that is a possibility. And then a council member, Kestee mentioned zoning for the Reed Street property. It's recently come to our attention. It's zoned R7, so we would have to do a conditionally used permit to change the zoning or change the zoning. We've left it as R7 because it was unknown what the council wanted to do with that property, whether it was to be a park or to sell the property. So that's, that's why it's R7. It would not be a problem for us to change it to public if that's the council's will. It's just things that, I'm glad that these issues come up and the council has the ability to talk about it. And that, I think that this is squarely in the realm of goal planning that, you know, to decide or at least make a discussion about what you would like the Reed Street property to be zoned. And maybe this is an opportunity to discuss whether or not $1,500 is still the right number for parks if the goals of the council really are to create more parks.
All right, thank you for the input, John. Greatly appreciate that. So I did have this conversation with Councilwoman Kestee. She did call me asking about the possibility of a park in her ward. And, and I did share information with her. I like the idea of, what I suggested to her was that that is something where the Parks and Recreation Committee could meet and actually start discussing that, and then bring suggestions to the council as to how you'd like to see funding develop, how you would like to see the parks develop, what areas need more parks, where can we improve the parks that we already have, questions like that. So just something, I know, I know Councilwoman Kinzer, that is your, that's your, I think you're the one who is the chair of that committee.
Right, yeah. And I would like to have a meeting soon about that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so good conversation. Anything else, any other input before we move on to our item two on our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I had my hand up.
I, I can't see it.
Oh, okay, well, Bill had it up there. Is this a good time?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Great. So we're talking about parks, and we'll get back to that screen. And as you know, last year, we had a council proposal for Front Park to remove invasive species and replace them with native species. And we've had some great work and interest from non-government organizations, nonprofits that want to help with that, with their granting. And we just need to have a little project management budget so Nathan can keep on top of that. So I'd like to see that as an action step.
All right. Somebody, invasive species. Okay, any other thoughts?
Madam Mayor, I just had one quick thought on talking about access to the parks themselves.
Yes.
There's quite a few neighborhoods on Cook Road that I routinely see kids and adults walking across Cook Road to access the Janicki Playfields. And from my awareness, the only real crossing is the roundabout. Has there been any talk about doing a pedestrian crossing like what we have down Highway 20 to access the playfields?
You know what? No, not that I am aware of. In fact, I don't think we've ever had that conversation. So Mark, do you want to make a comment regarding that?
Yes, one of our former council members had requested a crossing at the trail road intersection at Cook. And, and we've, we've actually done a little bit of work towards that. Of course, that's going to come out organically with the Jones-John Liner trail corridor improvements. And so we've kind of put it on the back burner because of that. That was Councilmember Dun Lee that had requested that. So that would be my comment right now, that we do have, you know, a crossing, two crossings planned in association with that project at the trail road intersection, which should, should help to some extent with that. That's all I have right now on that.
Okay. Councilman McGoughan, I think that that's a very valid point, simply because I do know that the Janicki family is putting in a park, kind of a play-all park there at Janicki Fields, which I think they hope to have in shortly. And you're right, there'll be kids who will be crossing the street. So perhaps that's something that we need to look at sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, John, and Mark, for your comments. All right, Mark.
No problem. We could, if council wishes, we could bring that back up to a higher priority and see if we can put in just a single crosswalk there at Trail and Cook. That's, that's the most logical vicinity for doing something like that.
Thoughts on that, council? Is that something maybe you'd like them to look at? Is that something maybe you'd like them to look at?
Yeah, I think that would be a really good idea.
I do too. All right. Thank you, Councilwomen Kinzer and Kestie. Yes, Councilman McGoffin?
I have a conflict of interest on that. I just, so I don't really feel comfortable going one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Owen, yes.
Yeah, you know, we've been talking about family park for three years and that's all we do is talk. I'd like to see something started somewhere. I know we don't have much money, but we could, like on Reed Street, if we're going to develop that property, and I think it's a good place because there's a lot of people that live in that area and Riverfront is way overrun, hasn't been too bad this year, but that's because of the COVID. But I'd like to see something somewhere started for a family park where families can go and have a picnic or whatever. We just don't have it here. We always develop something, but it turns into a stalker field or football field or something in that order. And it doesn't, it doesn't address the families in this area. So I'd like to see something started, at least put in the works and develop as we get the money. But I think that would be great. We need something on the north side of Highway 20 to kind of take the pressure off of Riverfront.
All right, I appreciate your comments, Councilman Owen. Just to make you aware, we are doing that up at Almstead Park, which is north of Highway 20 on Fruitdale, right there by the Swift Center. We are working on turning that into a park and that is the interview that we have with RCO at the end of the month. We are going out for two $500,000 grants. We're hoping to acquire at least one, maybe both would be perfect. But that's what we are looking to do. So we are making movement on that, just so you are aware. So thank you, so thank you. Okay. All right, so if there are no further comments regarding our goals and objectives, then I am going to turn this over to Mr. Merriman as he leads us through the department introductions for the 2020-2021 budget. Mr. Merriman?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, and good afternoon. Today, the goal of having these introductions is to just give you a sneak peek of what the departments are working on. We're a good portion of the way into developing our budgets right now. I think it's just good to get an initial icebreaker with city council. So here are some of the things that we're working on and what each department is trying to incorporate into their budget. It's a little different this year because we're doing a biennial budget. It will be the first time we've done two-year budgets. And that'll be an interesting planning tool for us. So we're pretty much through the logistics of putting that together and being able to actually make a document in that way. So I think what we'll do is just go down the list of department heads. They've got just a few minutes each to give you that initial discussion on what they're working on and how they're taking the budget and working it towards our goals and objectives that we just discussed previously. So we'll go ahead and start off with Dean at the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. I'm here with Frank Wagner. He's going to be going through this with me also because as you all are aware, I'm only going to be working with this budget for just a few short months next year before I leave. There's a couple of items in conjunction with Goal One. It's ambulance replacement time and we're going to start working on replacing ambulances in 2021 and 2022. There are a total of three ambulances that we're going to be putting prices in to replace. And Mark, please feel free to chime in on the ER and R in case I've got that wrong. But one of the things that we also wanted to make sure that you were aware of is you look at this year's budget and the expenditures, some of the items show that we're well under budget on it and that's due to COVID. If we weren't into what we, well, the way we would normally be operating, we would be spending more like in our volunteer pay. Right now, we're not paying anybody for training because we're not gathering the groups together for to do any training. Same with the overtime. And we haven't done the building, which has been in there for a couple of different years over here on Monroe Street or Murdoch Street, excuse me. So we're still, that's still in the air, correct Doug? If I'm wrong on that, we're still waiting for the funding for that. That's kind of where we're at, our big ticket items that you're going to see into this budget that we're going to be presenting will be the three ambulances and the building. Everything else is going to be pretty close to holding the line, if not a little bit of reduction in some of the line items, we're hoping. But it's just those two items, the vehicles and the building, so that will be the larger increases. Do you have any questions about or any thoughts or anything that you particularly would like to see from our budget in conjunction with that Goal One? Frank told me just get on the air and say, show me the money, but I didn't think that would be appropriate.
I like Frank's approach.
Yeah. I told him, yeah, he'll have to live with it for the next, you know, 17 months after I'm out of there. But. Is there any questions on our current budget and where we're at? I don't know if they have that, do they have that, Doug?
No, they don't have them with them, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, disregard that last moment.
So Dean, maybe do you want to explain a little bit about the building? You're talking about the building, just so everybody knows which one you're talking about, what are the plans?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. It's the building that is directly to the east of our current resident quarters here at Station One. It's a property, used to be the old Inslee's farm there or house. And we picked that up, I think, two years ago. We trained in it for a year, demolished it, the land is now vacant. And that's actually where we're going to be putting in conjunction with the Police Department, a vehicle storage and equipment storage room into there. It'll be a, I believe it's 60 by 90 foot pole type building, cement floor. And the last we had been discussing on this was before Mr. Berg left and he was talking about Valdez doing some of the work on that since they're already contracted through the city. But because of COVID, we've kind of put everything on hold, so.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
There's no more questions, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, next in our lineup is Lynn with the Police Department.
All right, so as I said earlier, I've got a couple of comments I came up with on the council goals on 19 that can answer some of the action steps questions. The first one there, completing a strategic plan with COVID and Prop One and all that coming in, that some of that has already been answered in our strategic plan. We just had to put it together as a, kind of as a document, as a guiding document at some point because almost every step in our workups for our strategic plan was the need for staffing and we're working through that right now. The second one, getting somebody to come in and do a review of our, kind of our, how we're doing business, that's on pause because nobody's doing anything outside their own little bailiwick. We can't get any people to WASP again and we just don't have the bodies to do it right now. We're scrambling to just fill shifts until we get all those new baby police officers on the road. So we're kind of on pause with getting action item number two. Action item number three, participate in training and effective staffing models and implementing. In 2019, late 2019 and early 20, we came up with a plan for some scheduling software and then we moved into 12-hour shifts when COVID hit. So the planning software has been really handy in keeping track of all that. We are still on four days on, four days off and trying to keep track of all of that and who's doing what, when, where and why is pretty difficult. But some, we've come up with some software issues that, or some software, I guess, procedures that are helping us work through that. The 12-hour shifts were, are kind of tough, especially once you hit the grandpa age and trying to have anything other than a work and sleep schedule. But it's actually working out really well. Officers are liking it and it's actually cut into our overtime budget pretty significantly. So we're, one of our goals there is we need you four days on, four days off and we try to leave you alone on your days off as much as possible. But we're still working through all that, the COVID issues. And when it first came up, the 12-hour shifts worked well to divide us up just in case we did have an exposure. And we're kind of sticking with that until we get some more bodies out and we get kind of more of an all-clear from the Health Department. Number four, ask voters to approve funding for increased staff. Prop One did it. And Prop One also kind of kicked our butts in one area. We hired all these officers and then the Police Academy shut down. But as of, I think, partway through September, I will have six people in the academy at one time and one will be out of training here in another two months, I believe. So I will have seven people hired and up and running as, now I guess, March and April will be getting more of those bodies out on the road. And we're really looking forward to that. Those of us that have been working through all this are going to be looking forward to that, a little bit of relief and some new people to share the burden. Let's see. We've already mentioned the work with the school district on a school resource officer. That's just been put on hold. Prop One gave us the ability to move in that direction, but the school district can't manage their part right now and we're still working through that. But that's a, that's another long-term planning thing. We need to plan at least a year to a year and a half in advance before we make that happen, just to get the right people involved and get bodies hired and all that. So it gives us a little bit of breathing space, but we still are moving forward on that, just waiting for the right time. And then the action item six, or action item seven, develop a succession plan for both the Fire Department and the Police Department. Dean and I have both been working on that and Dean's got a very effective staff in, you know, working towards that goal and so do I. Lieutenant Dan McElwraith has been working on the budget this year because he's really going to have to live with the consequences of whatever the budget is. Because my tentative retirement date is the end of 2022, so the end of this next budget is my, I guess, well, it's not quite written in stone like Dean's, but I'm getting there. And I'm hoping for having everything in place and a lieutenant ready to step up and replace me if that's what the mayor chooses. And then I divided up this council goals and work plan into what are we doing now? And it kind of goes along with what I've been saying. We've got our officers in the academy, most will be trained up by March and April. We do have one pending retirement at the end of the year and we're hoping to work with Doug on how that sets and when we can pull the trigger on hiring another officer for that replacement. But that's all the timing thing. We have one military deployment coming up about the time that all my officers get out of the academy and I'll be losing one of my, one of my senior patrol officers for a year to military duty. And then we've got a few other major purchases that we're working out the details on that and we're working through all that with Doug right now. But the big thing is all of the changes and all the things that we've all gone through in 2020, all of the civil strife in some of the bigger cities and all that. And I've been part of a work group with the chiefs and the sheriffs above Island down Skagit County and we've kind of put together a plan. We talked to one of the state representatives, Deborah Lekanoff from the 40th. And we kind of presented that to her and several other folks in the state legislature. And at a certain point, if the mayor would like on a future work session, we can, I can kind of give you a heads up on kind of some of the things that we've been talking about. And what we've noticed is a lot of the things that are coming up during a lot of the protests and during a lot of the civil strife are things that we aren't necessarily experiencing or that are things that we are already addressing. One thing that we're money ahead on in Cedar Woolley is body worn cameras. A lot of agencies don't do that. We've been doing them for seven, eight plus, 10-plus years and we believe in them. And that was a Mike Anderson and Aaron Berg initiative at one point and we pushed that hard to make that happen. So we've got a lot of good things going for us up here in the valley and like to share that with you, but the mayor can put me on a work session at some point whenever we get past budget and looking forward to what all we're doing and when we start working out more of the details of the budget, so. And with that, I do believe that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. So the next group we have, we have the three different areas of Public Works. We'll hear from Kevin, Nathan and Leo in that order and Mark will be the closer and follow up with them on an overview of Public Works. So we'll go ahead and launch Public Works with Kevin.
Good afternoon, thanks for the opportunity to share today. I've appreciated the support from all you since coming into this position in June. The encouragement over the past couple of months has been appreciated. I think most of you know, I'm sure, that I've been with the city for the last seven years working in the lab and operations. Prior to that, I was contracted to supervise La Connor's wastewater department while also supporting a number of treatment plants across multiple counties during that time. Overall, I have about 15 years in the industry. I'm still in the process of finalizing our 21-22 budget. So what I'd like to offer today is an overview of our overall budgetary priorities and department goals for the next two years, including existing and anticipated major projects, equipment and facility repair needs. It should be said that our main department goal is to continue to protect public health by maintaining quality F1 while sustaining our existing award-winning operations moving forward. So for the next six months, we have lots of projects that are up. We have a Cook Road pump station repairs, influence screen repairs, we have rotor two and three rehab, we have a transport unit to get for our biosolids trailer. We had a third influent pump, we replaced two that's on the shelf and ready to be installed. We have some outstanding electrical issues found in 2019 with an infrared report for the pump stations. And we have some injecting, grouting to do on the digester, seal and expansion joints. And then a diaphragm sludge pump needs to be switched out to a different style of a rotary lobe. All of those listed for this year, projects that are multifaceted and will require pretty much an immense level of coordination to complete within the next three months. I think we'll give it our best effort to do so, but it is feasible that some of these items may be requested to be pushed into the next calendar year. COVID-19 kind of slowed it down and we onboarded three. We onboarded three new staff members to get the staffing back up to what it previously was. Next year for 2021, we're going to continue to move forward with our capital projects from our general sewer system plan. I don't think that has come to council yet, still kind of in draft form. That includes a new lab operations building, which is a big one. We have a wastewater treatment plant. We have HVAC replacement. We have State Street pump station rehab. The plant electrical system upgrade was pushed from 2020 due to parts availability. 2022, we'll continue to follow the general sewer system plan. We have an aeration tank mixer upgrade. We'll be replacing some polymer mixing systems to, from a manual system to more of an automated system. So to highlight some of the major projects, the laboratory operations building, this upgrade will allow us to utilize an existing anoxic tank in its capacity than was intended. And also give us a building for hopefully the next 30-plus years. The electrical upgrade will provide more efficiency and capability and also safety and should be able to sustain for the next 20 years. Some HVAC replacements will go in one of our main control centers that will soon house our variable frequency drives for our aeration tank to help maintain adequate reduction temperature for the drives. The State Street pump station is a rehab of the station. It's 22 years old. So that is up to kind of to close, you know, we have a 50-year-old plant that requires continued maintenance to sustain our standard of quality and level of operation. With the council's support, I'm confident that the team we have in place can meet the demands of an aging facility with success. So that is all I have. Thank you.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that is a big list of things. It's in very competent hands with Kevin, so it'll be a good year for that. So thank you, Kevin. So next person we have is Nathan.
Okay. I'm going to talk very fast like the Micro Machine Man. I represent the Public Works Maintenance and Operations Division. And we're responsible for city parks and facilities, streets and transportation system maintenance, maintenance of the cemeteries, and also the maintenance and operation of the stormwater collection system. We operate the division primarily out of four budget funds. 101 is the parks and facilities fund, 102 is the cemetery fund, 103 is the street fund, and 425 is the stormwater utility fund. So we'll start with parks and facilities. Revenues from this fund come from a combination of property taxes, sales taxes, user fees, inter-fund transfers, and grants. So for parks, we're requesting no changes to the full-time employee count in 2021. We are requesting an additional four-month seasonal position in 2021 to assist with new property maintenance at Riverfront and Olmsted Park. And we're proposing a new field usage fee that we've been working with some of the user groups to help cover some of that cost of that, of that new four-month seasonal position. For things like operating supplies, we're only asking for just the standard 2% inflationary increases. Same thing with services and charges. We do have some additional professional services dollars budgeted in there to accomplish council action goal or council goal for action step one, which is to develop that parks master plan that we were talking about earlier. So we'll be, if that survives the budget process, we'll be working with the parks committee on developing that. And then also, we're planning to continue researching funding opportunities to do something with Memorial Park, which is another, another big goal. So for public utilities, requesting 4% rate increase. Repairs and maintenance area, just the standard 2%. And then for capital projects, we're requesting basically the same projects that we deferred from this year due to the COVID stuff, which is upgrades to the fire station, one residence quarters, some water system and sidewalk improvements at Metcalf Park, an upgrade to the community center restrooms, our annual picnic table purchases that we do every year, and a new riff for the Bingham Park picnic building. And this capital project list could change significantly depending on the outcome of the Olmsted grants. So, but we won't know that until, you know, sometime when the legislature meets after the first of the year, so. Moving on to the cemetery fund, revenues for this fund from a come from a combination of property taxes, cemetery fees, and sales tax from the sale of burial plots. And across the board for this fund, all we're asking for is just the standard 2% inflation increases for 20, and the same thing for 2022. In 2022, we're asking for a new niche wall because we're projecting that all the spaces are going to be sold by then. And we're going to need to budget and install a new one of those as more folks seem to be choosing cremation instead of standard burial. So moving on to the street fund, revenues come from a combination of pre-tax, taxes, fuel tax, one who has been full-time personnel from the 22% increases for supplies, services, and charges, and 1.77% increase in, for streetlights. And then trying to maintain our $150,000 that we budget from REIT dollars for our chip seal and overlay projects. And that's been a pretty good number for us. I'd like to see more, but that seems to be about as much work as we can accomplish with our staffing, so. And lastly, for the stormwater fund, revenues are primarily from stormwater utilities and grants. The stormwater fund pays for NPS compliance activities that are performed by the engineering division as well as the maintenance and operation, which is performed by our division. Once again, no, no changes in personnel and 2% inflation increases. And we are also going to have some significant dollars requested to complete our comprehensive stormwater management plan, which Mark will probably talk about a little bit. That's been deferred from previous years just because of workload. And that's pretty much it, just a couple of major issues facing our division that I'd like to make everybody kind of cognizant about. And these are issues that our proposed budget does not address. And primarily for me, the number one is staffing. Even though the city's grown a lot, we still have the same number of staff positions that we've had for just about 20 years. And in the last 20 years, we've added new residents, new streets, new stormwater infrastructure. We've assumed the Brickyard Creek sub-flood control zone, added many new facilities, new parks, and another cemetery. All of these new residents and amenities require service and maintenance. And this is already an issue as we're struggling to keep up with service requests and normal routine maintenance. And the city is going to continue to grow. And so that's a huge one for me. And then number two is the maintenance of the transportation system maintenance. And I'll, I'll let Mark talk more about that. But the current budget is just not adequate in several areas, primarily in our annual street paving budget. And there's very minimal dollars in there to do anything about our sidewalk issues and ADA compliance. But what you'll see in the budget request kind of maintains the status quo, but it doesn't really do much to move us forward. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Nathan. Okay, and then the third division we have in public works is headed by Leo, and he'll speak next. Do we see Leo on? Okay, not hearing from Leo. Maybe we'll go to you, Mark, and then see if we can pick Leo up. Can anybody hear me?
I, I hear you fine.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Mark was still muted, as seems to be my habit. Sorry about that. Thank you, council, for the opportunity of talking about public works. Leo was on earlier, so he's probably just having some technical issues. Bill might give him a call. Oh, there he is. Okay, so.
Sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Why don't you go ahead, Leo, and then I'll, I'll close up afterwards.
Okay, um, Leo Jacobs with the City's Blue Lily Garbage and Recycling Department, Solidways. Some of our, what I'm working on, on the budget, and what I want to make council aware of is mainly the housing that's going up here. We're, we're starting to see some good growth and the possibility of more growth coming in, especially up in the Portobello and the Jones Road. Jones Road is state, is starting to fill up. We are at capacity. So if the Jones Road or the Portobello stuff goes in, we're, we're going to need to start looking at an additional staff member. And I'm thinking, based on talking with Mark and the timing of the possibility of all the houses coming in and when they do come in, we're thinking about a staff member somewhere around 2023. We will have to split the routes up likely before that. But hopefully, if everything goes right, 2023 will be the time to maybe add a day like Monday. Because we go Tuesday through Friday now for our residential routes. We may have to add a Monday, or we might have to add an additional driver with one of our backup trucks. Also, one of the other major concerns that I'm working on right now in the budget is the recycling. You may have all heard that recycling has been, it's been going up in price tremendously because China will not take it anymore. And developing domestic markets for recycling has been very trying. So basically, we are sick, the price of recycling is $160 a ton to get rid of. We are paying next year $101 in garbage fees to get rid of it, or get rid of our garbage. So anyway, I'm trying to weigh the, the pros and the cons of it. And I'll be working with other jurisdictions and seeing, you know, where we're going with recycling. And I'll definitely be working on some options for the council to look at in 2021 and maybe make some decisions on maybe putting it on hold. Or if we're going to do it, we need to up the prices of recycling to cover, to make sure we cover our costs. Let's see. One of the other big ones is, on the recycling front still, is we do have a lot of customers out there, about seven or 800 customers that have additional, additional recycling carts other, rather than just one. So right now, our current charge is $3.94 for one cart. But we have some people that have two, three, even some customers that have four and up to five carts. And those have been free just with the $3.94. So I'll likely be bringing the council or up to the budget committee to ask for everybody to pay for those individual carts. One of the other things is the county is raising their rates, of course, to $2 this year. So we're seeing those price, prices of everything is going up, unfortunately. I'll transition to fleet real quick. The price of equipment keeps going up, of course. And we've, we're getting some real delays with the equipment due to the COVID. So some of the equipment that we bought this year is going to be delayed into the start of 2021. So we'll work with Mark on that, just so that will kind of make look, the ER and R will look a little odd for a little bit. But just so you know, repairs and maintenance of the equipment is getting a little rough right now just because the parts are hard to get in for some stuff. So we're seeing some of our equipment stay around here a little bit longer. So when somebody brings in something broken and we go to get the parts for it, they have to get it from the factory. The factory is on the East Coast, and they're not, you know, working at the time or shipping. Anyway, some of that stuff has been a major issue for getting stuff repaired. And the last one is, we, we need to start thinking about, in the fleet department, we need to start thinking about a full-time fleet person. And I know staff, you know, is costly, of course. But with the amount of equipment we have, we, we might want to consider having a full-time staff person here in the future, 2022, 2023, something like that. Those are the things we're working on in the budget here at the Solidways. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Leo. And Mark, you want to go ahead and wrap up public works?
Yes, thank you. So you've heard a lot of what I try to stay up with, with the presentations of our very excellent superintendents there from the three departments. We also have the Engineering Division, which David Lee is city engineer, Julie Rosario, our assistant, and Wally Horr, our expector. And of course, we've been quite busy this year, as, as has been the case for, since I've been here, really. We are just about done with the SR20 widening project. I understand they're going to do the paving work on that, the shoulders tomorrow. And then next week, they'll be doing the overlay on that and opening that entrance up. And the county, I understand, is going to start right on their project, building the new facility there. Plus the Jameson overlay. And David will be rolling right into the 2021 projects from a design standpoint. He'll be designing a sewer project for the collections department, part of the things that Kevin was mentioning on Ball Street. It was a project we were planning to do this year, but due to workload, we've extended into 2021. And that'll also be coordinated with an overlay that Nathan has planned for Ball Street. In addition, he's going to be following up the design for the widening project on Highway 20 with the shared use path that we have federal funding for design and construction out on that same route. So he's got another busy year planned. I'll roll right into our arterial streets projects. Then we are in design right now for intersection improvements at SR20 and SR9 Township. The design work will be completed this year. And construction phase is about 700,000, and that is funded for construction in 2021. So we'll be managing that. I don't know if any of you have been out there, but BNSF has been doing some clearing work on the future bridge, bridge location for the Jones John Liner arterial project. And we're understanding that they may go ahead and build that this year. They had told us previously that it was looking more like 2021, but they're trying to keep some crews busy. They've had some impacts from COVID-19 on their revenue stream. And, and to avoid layoffs, they're trying to do these projects, so that's happening. We've applied for funding for intersection improvements at Highway 9 and John Liner and McGaribault Road, which we'll know about in November. And then also for an overlay on Wicker Road out from the the part of Wicker that's in the city limits, anyway. So lots of things happening on that. There are a few development projects that are, are making our life easier on the Jones John Liner project. Garden Meadows is a subdivision that is going to be taking place between Jones Road and John Liner. And David has reviewed the final plans for that. That's going to be moving forward shortly as with BYK's developments off of McGaribault Road. So lots, lots of things happening on arterial streets and could be more if we're successful with the TIB applications. The only one that you will actually see reflected in the budget will be the construction phase of the intersection improvements at 20 and, and nine. We've already talked a little bit about some things in the department's. Mayor made mention of the ADA transition plan. We have Transportation Solutions, Inc., preparing that for us. And we expect that will be done by the end of March 2021. Just to speak about what's gonna happen with that, that's likely gonna enter, make us officially aware of a lot of shortcomings we have on American Disabilities Act type of things. The primary ones that I've been concerned with, of course, have been the sidewalks and ramps. And we've done pretty well over the last years at updating quite a few of those. Several hundred have been done or added with the projects we've been doing, and we're gonna continue to focus on that. But with the plan in place itself, we're gonna probably need to be more serious about looking at isolated locations around the city that have defective ramps and things like that. We've been budgeting in the neighborhood of 25,000 a year to do sidewalk repairs, and the average ramp costs around $3,000, so it doesn't go very far. But you will see additional projects coming up over time when, when we have the plan in hand to address citywide ADA issues. There may be also some facilities issues that will come out of that for the parks and the buildings we have. They also have to be ADA compliant, and that, that kind of thing will also be identified in our plan. Leo didn't mention it, but we've been working for a couple of years on trying to fund the new Public Works Operations and Solid Waste Facility. And that's a key thing on, one thing he did talk about, and that is a new mechanic. Right now, we're kind of hemmed in by our existing facility, and council has graciously provided us with the means of funding a new facility. But as you know, the estimates we've got from the preliminary plan we did are roughly double what the, the revenue stream that we have in place would fund. With COVID-19, none of us had time to really look at that very close. We got those estimates in the first part of the year. But we are looking at options of the possibility of buying an existing facility and, and also trimming back the project to make that affordable and doable. We need to come in at somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 million is, is the goal for that. So right now, what we're anticipating is we'll continue doing some tuning on that in 2021 with the goal of trying to move forward with an actual facility in 2022. We'll have some things on that in the budget to reflect that, that continuing plan. Kevin talked extensively about the wastewater facility and what's going on there. And you'll be seeing on the 23rd, the first read for the wastewater comprehensive plan, the sewer comprehensive plan. And that'll outline all of those projects that he discussed in more detail, at least the, the, the larger ones. We have, just to let you know, that broken up into basically three different things. It is existing wastewater treatment plant repairs and upgrade to bring the, the facility in compliance with our existing permit requirements, which was one of the things that was kind of a surprise out of our capacity and condition assessments we've completed over the last several years. We have completed the aeration system improvements, and that seems to be working well. We'll be moving forward from that with the electrical improvements that Kevin touched on. It's about a $600,000 project that we have already awarded, and because there's such a long lead time on that, as he mentioned, that will actually construct in the first part of 2021. We also are in design for the wastewater lab operations facility, and that's about a million seven project combined with relocating the existing street, the former parks facility down there that has to be demolished to put that new facility in place. So that'll be a project that you'll see bid and construct in 2021. It's gonna keep us quite active. Beyond that, as Leo mentioned, we're monitoring the ERNR fund. We'll be looking at closely at how both the COVID-19 impacts on deliveries will affect us, but also any inflation on purchases that might turn up as a part of that. As far as funding operations or activities that we're doing, we're gonna be making another push at legislature in 2021 to fund the bulk of the Jones John Liner project. We're gonna be having a discussion with our lobbyist, Mark Strulie, here in the next couple of weeks when we can coordinate that with the mayor and Doug's schedules to start that process. We are hearing some rumblings that there will be a pretty good push on the Senate package that we're a part of the last couple of sessions. And maybe a little counterintuitive, but generally speaking, infrastructure has been a popular thing to spend money on during tight times in order to do economics stimulation. So we have some hopes that that might make some progress. Of course, we're not waiting on that, and we've been applying for things like the intersection at, at Highway 9 and, and John Liner Road through TIB funds as well, and we'll continue to look at it in that way. And that'd be the last thing I'll mention again. We've already talked about it some, but the loss of the funds for the Transportation Benefit District have, have really hampered us in a, in a number of ways. It was about 200,000 a year that was produced by that. As Nathan mentioned, that's not really enough to fully catch us up on our maintenance operations, but we were making some significant progress using about half of those funds for overlays or match for these TIB grants we've been doing. And so we just simply don't have that capacity any longer. Working with Doug at Finance and Jill, we were able to put together a way of making the projects this year work, but that was tough, and it, it involved us using much more of the REIT funds than we have in the past. And we're looking, we're probably gonna have to continue that, that particular methodology for another year or so. But it is gonna be critical to look carefully at a way of replacing those lost vehicle tab dollars. The other half of that 200,000 were actually for a match for these projects. I guess I might have already said that. So that's a real critical thing for us to keep in mind, and, and, and I know it's really tough to even think about a tax increase during these times that we're in right now, and not even feasible, I would imagine, for, for 2021, but we, we still need to keep that in mind. We've been quite successful at putting together projects over the last number of years on the transportation front. We want to continue to do that in any way that we can. So thanks, council, for your support. We get a lot done with just a few people here, but it's been working out well, and looking forward to continue to serve the city in that, that way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. As everybody can tell, there are a ton of things going on in Public Works, and my hats off to everybody, Kevin, Nathan, Leo, and Mark for all the work they do. As you can tell with finances, it's not always an easy project, but they always seem to pull those things together. So it's, it's just good work for everybody.
Doug, I have one question for Mark.
Okay.
Mark, do you know if, if it's gonna happen this year, if it's slated for next year to Slurry Seal or Worthway? I know it's been, it was talked about a few times.
Yes, we, we are, are planning to do a Slurry Seal project in, in 2021, and we think doing that as a part of a larger project will bring the prices down significantly from what we were seeing at the end of last year and this year. We tried to work it in this year, but with COVID-19 and some other issues that kind of arose, it just became infeasible to do it, but we do have it on the, on the books to do that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. So next, we'll go to John Coleman in Planning.
All right. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay.
We hear you, John.
All right, thanks. So, well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to discuss planning, building department, council. Just as a reminder, the, you know, the planning department's primary goals are to engage with the public for the purpose of planning the growth of the, the city over the next 20 years. So, you know, we develop the plans to make sure that future development is, is good for the community and also provide a good business environment for potential developers in the city. So try to strike a balance between being friendly to developers and also making sure that the people of the community feel like the development that's happening is to their liking and part of the process. So that's an important thing that the planning department does. And of course, the building department's primary mission is to provide public safety via building planner view and building inspections. And so those are kind of our, our prime motivation for what we've, what we do. As, although the other departments have said, you know, we haven't finished our budgeting yet, but we're, we've been working on the, working on those. And, and I have some good news. You know, last year, we were able to hire our assistant planner, and so we're not anticipating any major expenditures. So a little bit of good news for everybody. And we, we don't, we don't have expensive equipment like ambulances and sewer digesters and other large items like that that cost a lot. But we do have some modest expenses, and we're always trying to make improvements. And during the time of COVID, you know, we're, we're in the position to meet a little bit of things here and there just to, to accommodate the development in a new scenario. You know, we're not allowed to, to meet with the public, so we've been doing all of our development communication online. So one of the things that we're working on this year is implementing a new online submittal system for permits. I mentioned this at a previous council meeting. So we're, we're working with our, our permit software company to be able to allow applicants to submit their plans, their applications, and all, all of the materials necessary for development online, instead of them having to email it to us, which has worked a little bit stopgap, but it's, it's not the most efficient way, especially when dealing with large plans. So we'll just need some modest, we're, we're looking at some modest technology improvements to make sure that those sorts of things are able to, to happen. Like I said, last year, we hired Catherine. We are, she's our assistant planner, and she's been doing a good job of learning how planning departments work. And she's been doing most of the land use applications, the day-to-day communication with people in the, in the public that call with questions about their zoning, building department questions, those sorts of things, which has been great, and very thankful that council was able to make that happen for us. It's especially good because we've seen a, a large increase in land use applications over the past year. So I never would have been able to get it done without help from, from Catherine and from the council to giving, being able to hire Catherine. Super appreciative of that, as are the community members, because, you know, we're able to provide the services in a timely fashion now. And that, that's really important to, to keep people, keep our applicants happy. So I mentioned, you know, there's just a few modest things, largely not, not, nothing, nothing too major. We were talking about the council goals is to, one of the council goal number two is to promote economic development. That's, that's the one that the planning department and the building department really can, can help out with. You know, we work with developers not only to help them get through the permitting process, but we also try to be responsive, responsive to developer needs. If there's something, if there's code that is particularly difficult for a developer to manage in a certain situation, we're always open to looking at development regulation changes or standard, changes to department standards to, to help. But like I said, this, these changes always go through a public review process so that we can engage the, the citizens of the community too, to make sure that any changes that we make aren't just to, you know, help developers at all costs, but to strike a balance between being a benefit to the community as well as making it a business-friendly community for future developers. You know, everybody's been downtown. We know that COVID-19 has really hurt the businesses in town, and we're, we're very sympathetic to that and doing what we can to, to help out, whether it's little things like allowing for greeting rolls to allow for outdoor dining or whatever, whatever else the community says would be useful. We're happy to address that and try to be responsive and make changes. I know it's always fun to talk about some of the development going on. In the downtown, we're, we're still seeing some interest in, in development in the downtown area. BYK is still looking at doing a mixed commercial and residential development on the south part of the Pioneer Marketplace, so along State Street, adding more commercial to that end and some residential above. That's one project that we're hoping will be coming down the pike here sooner than later. The, you know, the Ford dealership is now vacant, and we've been in communication with the property owner to, to see what's gonna be best for them. So helping them decide what sort of development could go in there and which would be mixed use with residential above and behind. No, no concrete plans on that property right now, but we have been in communication with the property owner, as well as some other smaller lots in the downtown area that are looking to, looking to develop. Would be nice to see some of those happen. Mark mentioned that there's a couple of large subdivisions. Those are things that we've been working on. We've also been working on annexations, and later this month, I'll be bringing a brand-new annexation request to the council for your review. Won't get into the details on that, but these are, these are all ways that we engage the community to, to plan for our 20-year growth, and then, of course, do the actual development permitting through the building and planning department as well. Leave it at that.
Okay. Great, John. All right, thank you. Bill, we'll go to you with IT next.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. Fancy slides. Okay, so basically, the IT department, our main focus is on supporting all the other departments in their operations to meet the council goals. So with that, we do things like, right now, we're working to assist with the bias cloud transition, with the ADA Transition Plan for Public Works, with the wastewater WIMM software implementation. That's the, I think, I believe WIMM stands for Water Information Management Solution. Kevin could probably correct me on that. Online permitting application that, that John was just talking about. And of course, all of these wonderful virtual meetings that we have to have. A lot of them can be done by the individual departments, but many critical ones need to be recorded and archived and made available via our website and Facebook. Those are the, the, the things that are more specific to departments. We also do some, some things that are helpful to the entire city, like the fiber project and the implementing of the new firewall and the DocuWare Document Management System. Some of the, the main things we've got coming up is migration to Microsoft hosted exchange email. And this, this will help city departments to communicate and collaborate more effectively in the office or in the field. Following that, that, that will actually be implemented later this fall, but the budget implications will be felt in, in 2021 and 2022. Not a huge increase, but, but there is a little bit of a bump. Right now, the Skagit County hosts our email and they have given us a pretty good deal on that. But there will be some extra added value for having, being hosted by Microsoft in the cloud. Also, we'll be transitioning to Microsoft 365. And this will give the staff more flexibility in the Office Suite licensing. They'll be able to use Microsoft Office applications like Word, Excel on iOS devices, on laptops, on multiple platforms. And that'll just be one license. Also doing some server upgrades. Some of those may be in, in tandem with the WIMS software implementation out at wastewater. The, this will allow departments like wastewater, Public Works, and Public Safety to access data more efficiently and securely. Will be enhancing the fiber optic network. This will provide better service to the new library and bring facilities onto our fiber network that are currently accessed by wireless copper or not at all. The library, the new library will likely be the first customer connected to that new backbone. And then after that, we're going to try to get the, the pump stations onto the fiber system. So I'll be working closely with Kevin to get all that done. And then for next year, we'd like to start phase two of the council chambers AV upgrade. This year, we're still waiting on the cameras for phase one to be completed, but everything is looking really good and came in on budget. And I think the phase two, I was speaking with Doug earlier today, I believe we can probably get that done for around 25,000. This will allow council and others to communicate more clearly with our staff and citizens. We can use that room for, for more training opportunities, for community meetings, things like that. I think it will be a big plus. So for the 2021 proposed budget changes, this is very preliminary, but we have really only estimated about a, a 1% increase in the budget. And that is mainly due to the increased cost of the Microsoft hosted exchange. And then again, for, for 2022, I estimate the same, same amount for that. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. And then the last department we had is Jill in finance. Do you see Jill on, Bill?
She's muted. I'm going to ask her to unmute.
Okay.
I think you're unmuted now, Jill. Maybe she expected mine to go longer.
Okay. I'll go ahead and just, if she comes back on, we can have her jump in. But I did talk with Jill a little bit today about the finance things. It's not so much the department, but finance covers overall the budget. And there were a number of things there. One is taking a pretty conservative approach this year to revenues because of COVID. We just don't quite know. We were using August as the benchmark. So we'll look at revenues going January through August to get a good feel for this year, and that'll help us to project what next year will be hopefully. So that is the, the primary thing there. One of the things that will be a discussion we're required to have is property taxes. As you know, that discussion hinges around an index called the IPD. And that kind of says how we have to approach any property tax changes or anything like that. Normally that number is greater than 1%, but it came in just a little over 0.6% this year. So there's some steps and things that we'll have to do in those conversations when that time comes up. That'll be sometime in October. So we'll do that. But for most of the things, at least out of my office right now, is working with Jill on the revenue projections and going over those. As you could tell, there's a lot to coordinate with the departments and they definitely make my job easier by the great work that they're all doing and putting together. So you can tell they're very detail oriented and have a pretty good sense of what their business requirements are. One of the things I will be looking at, as you know, in previous years in council meetings, we've talked about fund balances. We'll talk a little bit about those at another council meeting, but just making sure that we're following our strategy that we talked about over the last couple of years and making sure that those are adequate. And we're really looking at the sustainability of the city even beyond our two-year budget. So those will all be important conversations to have. So on that, Bill, I don't know if we've seen Jill come back on or...
She's there and she's unmuted.
Okay. Okay. So we'll go ahead. One of the things I'm looking at as always is the clock. And we had scheduled a couple of videos to get everybody signed off on their public meeting requirements. We won't have time to do both of those today, which is probably good. They're good ones to maybe split up in a couple of different meetings. So I would just make the recommendation, maybe we just do one of the two today, Mayor. We have the one on open public meetings. It takes about 15 minutes and we would have time to accomplish that before the end of our meeting at six o'clock.
Well, let's, let's do that. Let's, thank you. That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, Bill, the two links I sent, the one that's open public meetings would be that one. And just so everybody knows, this is a state requirement. We have to all go through this training to meet the open public meetings and Public Records Act requirements.
Hi, I'm Washington State Attorney General Bob Ferguson. Joining me in this video is our Open Government Assistant Attorney General Nancy Creer. This training video provides an overview of the Open Public Meetings Act for both the general public and for public agencies. It is intended to provide a greater understanding of the legal requirements of this important act. The Open Public Meetings Act is a law passed by the people of the state of Washington in 1971, at the time of a nationwide effort to make government affairs more accessible and government more responsive. The purpose of the act is to provide the public access to information concerning the conduct of state and local government. The law is based on the principle that open government is essential to a free society. The act provides the people of our state the opportunity to witness the deliberations and the decisions of their government. State and local agencies, such as school boards, city and county councils, and state commissions must comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. Actions and deliberations of these governing bodies must be conducted openly. Meetings subject to the act must be open to the public, gavel to gavel, unless a law permits a meeting or a part of the meeting to be closed. Thank you so much for watching and I hope you find this training informative.
This training presentation is based on the Open Public Meetings Act. The OPMA is in RCW 42.30. This training video contains 15 short segments. The attorney general just discussed segment one, the history, intent, and purpose of the act. In the remaining segments, we will cover: scope of the OPMA, what is a governing body, what is a meeting, what is action, what is final action, travel and gathering, regular meetings, special meetings, executive sessions, public attendance and comment, minutes, liability, other laws, and additional resources. The act has several clear requirements and compliance with them is improved with training. Training can mean the difference between complying with the law and expensive litigation. The act applies to governing bodies of multi-member public agencies, both state and local. Public agency includes: A) Any state board, commission, committee, department, educational institution, or other state agency which is created by or pursuant to statute other than the courts and the legislature; B) Any county, city, school district, special purpose district, or other municipal corporation or political subdivision of the state of Washington; C) Any sub-agency of a public agency which is created by or pursuant to statute, ordinance, or other legislative act, including but not limited to planning commissions, library or park boards, commissions, and agencies; and D) Any policy group whose membership includes representatives of publicly owned utilities formed by or pursuant to the Washington laws when meeting together or on behalf of participants who have contracted for the output of generating plants being planned or built by an operating agency. In some cases, an entity which is not an agency can still be subject to the act when it is the functional equivalent of a public agency. This determination depends on whether it performs a government function, receives government funding, the extent of government involvement or regulation, and whether the entity was created by government. Examples of public agencies subject to the act include city councils, county councils, school boards, fire district boards, and state commissions. Agencies governed by an individual, such as a single director, are not subject to the act. Some activities of public agencies are not subject to the OPMA. They include certain licensing and permitting activities, quasi-judicial matters, matters governed by the Washington State Administrative Procedure Act, APA, and certain collective bargaining activities. All meetings of the governing body of a public agency shall be open in public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the governing body of a public agency, except as otherwise provided in the OPMA. A governing body is defined as the multi-member board, commission, committee, council, or other policy or rulemaking body of a public agency, or any committee thereof, when the committee acts on behalf of the governing body, conducts hearings, or takes testimony or public comment. Meeting means meetings at which action is taken. Physical presence of the members is not required. A meeting can occur by phone, or in some cases by email. I will talk more about email exchanges later in this video. A meeting does not need to be titled "meeting." The OPMA also applies to retreats, workshops, and study sessions. A meeting does not occur if there is not a quorum. Both actions and final actions are subject to the OPMA. Action means the transaction of the official business of a public agency by a governing body, including but not limited to receipt of public testimony, deliberations, discussions, considerations, reviews, evaluations, and final actions. Final action means a collective positive or negative decision, or an actual vote by a majority of the members of the governing body when sitting as a body or entity upon a motion, proposal, resolution, order, or ordinance. Final actions must occur in public. Secret ballots are not allowed. A majority of the members of a governing body may travel together or gather for purposes other than a regular meeting or special meeting, so long as no action is taken. And remember, action includes discussion of agency business. This means a quorum of members can travel to a meeting together, or they can gather at a public or private event, such as a festival or social function, so long as they do not collectively discuss agency business or matters. Regular meetings are recurring meetings held in accordance with a periodic schedule by ordinance, resolution, bylaws, or other rule. State agencies file the notice of regular meetings each year with the Office of the Code Reviser. Regular meeting agendas are to be posted online on an agency's website 24 hours in advance, unless the agency does not have a website, or if it employs fewer than 10 full-time equivalent employees. Special meetings are meetings that are not regular meetings, called by the presiding officer or a majority of the members. This means they are meetings not on a fixed schedule, such as on a day different than the regularly scheduled meetings. Certain notice requirements apply to special meetings. For example, 24-hour advance written notice must be provided to members of the governing body unless waived, provided to local newspapers, radio, and TV stations that have a request on file, posted on the agency's website if the agency has a website, unless other exceptions apply for agencies with few staff, and prominently displayed at the main entrance and the meeting site. The notice must specify the time, place, and business to be transacted. There is an exception to the notice requirements for emergency special meetings. Those are meetings involving injury or damage to persons or property, or the likelihood of injury or damage, where time requirements make notice impractical and increase likelihood of injury or damage. Under the OPMA, an executive session is a part of a regular or special meeting that is closed to the public for the limited purposes listed in the OPMA. The grounds for holding an executive session are narrowly construed. The purpose of the executive session and the time it will end must be publicly announced before excluding the public, and the time can be extended by further announcement. Examples of purposes include certain real estate discussions, reviewing negotiations on publicly bid contracts under certain conditions, evaluating the qualifications of an applicant for public employment, and meeting with legal counsel regarding enforcement actions, litigation, or potential litigation. The OPMA provides a list of authorized executive session purposes at RCW 42.30.110. In addition, a public agency can have a closed meeting to discuss matters not subject to the OPMA, such as deliberating on a quasi-judicial matter. Other laws may provide additional procedures or authority for particular meetings or hearings, or for particular agencies. An agency must carefully follow the law when meeting in an executive or closed session. For example, when meeting in an executive session under the OPMA to discuss agency enforcement actions, litigation, or potential litigation, there are three requirements. First, legal counsel representing the agency must be present. Second, the purpose is to discuss an agency enforcement action, litigation, or potential litigation to which the agency, governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is a party or is likely to become a party. And finally, public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Remember, an agency can discuss only those matters in an executive session under the OPMA that it has told the public it would discuss. The members cannot talk about other topics in that executive session. As we discussed, all meetings of the governing body of a public agency shall be open in public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the governing body of a public agency, except as otherwise provided in the OPMA. An agency also cannot place conditions on attendance, such as requiring persons to register their names or fill out a questionnaire before attending. As noted, email or phone call discussions among members of a governing body can be a meeting under the OPMA. But the purpose of the OPMA is to permit the public to attend and observe agency meetings. So when the public is unable to attend email or phone call discussions that are meetings under the OPMA, the act has been violated. For example, it is generally agreed that the members can meet via a teleconference call, so long as, one, any public notice procedures are satisfied, and, two, an agency sets up a process for the public to attend, such as having a speakerphone available at the agency's official meeting location, so the public can hear the discussion. In contrast, since an email exchange among a quorum of members of a governing body is not open to the public, such an exchange in which action takes place is a meeting that would violate the OPMA. And remember again, action is broadly defined. Those email exchanges do not comply with public notice and attendance requirements for regular or special meetings. The OPMA does not include a requirement that public agencies allow public comment. Nevertheless, many public agencies do permit some public comment period at a meeting, such as at the beginning of a meeting. Agencies can put reasonable procedures in place to allow for public comment. And the OPMA has procedures for dealing with disruptions when the orderly conduct of the meeting is unfeasible. The minutes of all regular and special meetings, except executive sessions of such boards, commissions, agencies, or authorities, shall be promptly recorded, and such records shall be open to public inspection. That law does not require any specific format for minutes. That law also does not require an audio or video recording of a meeting, although many agencies make such recordings. We have advised that the minutes should, at a minimum, recite the significant actions of the agency. Violations of the OPMA can result in a lawsuit against an agency and its members. A court can impose a $500 civil penalty as personal liability against each member who attends a meeting in knowing violation of the OPMA, and a $1,000 penalty for a subsequent knowing violation. A court can declare any action taken at a meeting not held in compliance with the OPMA null and void. And a court will award costs and attorney's fees to a successful party seeking a remedy under the OPMA. To recap, this presentation covers the highlights of the Open Public Meetings Act. Public agencies may be subject to other laws governing other particular meeting or hearing procedures or governing particular agencies. And the laws concerning agency meetings and hearings can also be amended from time to time. Therefore, agencies are cautioned to be mindful of all the current laws concerning their meeting and hearing procedures.
Thanks for participating in the Attorney General's Open Government Training. For more information, there are resources available for agencies to receive training and technical assistance for compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. An official should first consult with its agency's counsel for routine assistance and for training. Additional resources are listed on this website. The Assistant Attorney General for Open Government, Nancy Creer, is also available to provide information about the Open Publics Meetings Act.
Okay, we can stop there, Bill. I think that's the end of the video.
So is there anything else that you would like to add, Doug, or?
No, I think that's it for this evening.
Good. Okay, so we're coming up on the 6:00 hour. In fact, I have a couple of minutes just showing on my watch. So thank you, everybody, for coming in. Thank you for your input, great input. And I look forward to 2021, 2022, working with you on the budget and making some great things happen for the city of St. Louis. So have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.